All right, this is call to order, the council work session April 29th, 6:00 PM Town Hall Complex. Call to order, Mr. Charles, if you would do our invitation, please.
Yes, sir, if you all would just bow for a moment with us, Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord. Come now, Lord, God, thanking you for your grace and your mercy, Lord, for bringing us through another day's journey, God. For watching over us last night, touching us with the finger of love this morning, and leading and guiding us down the path of righteousness all day long, God, and we give you the glory. Now, Lord, we ask that you come into our midst, bless this council body, Lord. Bless the administration and all of the citizens of this great community that you have put together, that we might be the best servants that we could possibly be, and all to your glory, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Stand for the worship. Come on in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to take a motion for approval of the agenda, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Prowse to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Susan, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Would you like them staying, Mr. Kane?
No, let's just kind of say, why don't you just ask for unanimous consent?
I'm in.
My hand is out.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved unanimously, thank you. Actually, this is.
On my copy, I printed it out.
Of the agenda or the agenda?
Agenda.
Yeah.
The next.
I copied, but I left.
It's really fairly short.
We print some up there. There's one item on there.
Mr. Olin is on the way, so we will take a quick recess, people can grab some food while he's making it over. All right, we'll call this back to order, moving on to item five, discussion topics, A, discussion of fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. Mr. Luckadoo, can I enter?
Welcome, everybody, thank you for coming out and being here. Hopefully, over the past couple of weeks, you've had an opportunity to go through this and evaluate each of the budgets. As I stated in the email, there are many things in this that they, the expenses are what they are, the revenues are what they are, and there's not much we can do with those, there are some things that can be flexed a little bit, but we've worked through with department heads and administrations, sitting down, going through budgets, and evaluating our needs for this coming year, and we have put in this budget at this point what we feel is a good projected budget for this year.
Does that include council?
What's that? I'm gonna highlight each budget in a couple of minutes, and I'll talk about what's included and what's not.
No, I was talking about your discussion as to what's expected.
Well, so far, it's just been department heads and administration, and that's why we're at council tonight, to discuss the budget with council.
I mean, council as a part of the budget process?
Right.
Was that council included in putting these numbers together?
Not at this point, that's what we're here to discuss tonight, if there's any changes that need to occur with the budget, and based on your review and evaluation.
One of us have, and I heard from my councilman, Hall.
She had text me and stated she was gonna be unable to make it tonight.
Ted, we have a lot of new council members. And so, previously, there has been a misconception here about how the budget is formulated. It's our job to set the budget. And when you set the budget, the changes that need to be, that should be made, or that we want to be made, is council's prerogative. And once you, when people say, "Council changed this, or council changed that in the budget", we sit back and like, "No, we didn't do that, I didn't agree to that." Once you vote for the budget, then the two readings, any changes in that budget, you voted for, you made. So, as we go through this, we need to make the changes, what staff does is fine, but this is council's opportunity to dictate the budget positions and things like that, so that we don't get into this thing about, "We can't micromanage Ted".
Well, I'm gonna thank you for your input, and now I'm gonna turn it over to Teddy, because this is really his portion of work. So, thank you very much.
I mean, that's fine, but you know.
Thank you very much for that.
But, listen.
I wanna start the presentation.
Okay, but listen.
How long do you want to be here, Mr. Kane?
You do that a lot, because you have something else to do.
No, I don't have anything else to do, Mr. Kane, I wanna, I wanna work on this budget, Mr. Kane, and this is part of the agenda, and we're gonna continue on the agenda, thank you very much for your input, thank you.
Did you know that, what I just said?
Sir?
Did you know what I just said? Did you know that information? No?
Yes, I did, sir, I, sir, don't question me, let's continue with the agenda.
You didn't know that, and so don't try to belittle what I said.
Teddy, please continue with the agenda.
So, tonight, here.
You didn't know.
The outline that I've established for tonight, for us to work through this, is that we will, I'm gonna do a budget summary, highlight of the overall budget, then we're gonna move into highlights of the Victims Assistance Fund and that budget, and from there, we're going, excuse me, we're in recess until a call of the mayor.
Okay. We have like a little key.
We need a vote to go in recess.
We certainly do, so let's carry on.
Exactly.
You just can't storm out in the.
Correct, you need a vote to go in.
So, please continue, sir, because we have not had a vote to recess.
Someone wanna let him know that we're not in recess?
Mayor, bro? Yes, we're, I tell you, you are in charge of it.
We need a vote to recess.
We have to have a vote to recess, we got the board shooting vote to recess.
I have a vote in second.
We do have a vote, I'm sure.
No, we don't.
Paul just said that he was agreeing with you.
Yeah, yeah, so let's just go on with the meeting until he comes out.
And so, pro Tim gets to go on.
Go ahead, so we can go on with the meeting, so we can get out of here.
Exactly.
Well, continue, man.
All right, so budget summary, highlights of the overall budget, we're gonna move into the Victims Assistance Fund and that budget, we're gonna talk about the highlights of the general fund, those departmental budgets and capital requests, then into age tax, and finish up with the utility fund. So, a quick look, so a quick look at the overall budget summary, this is for each, for all the funds of the town, looking at fiscal year 1920. We're looking between all the funds at about $7,853,376. At this time, that's what we have as projected revenue, and therefore expenses. That is an increase from last year's 1819 budget and 1718 budget.
He said that that is the revenue, projected revenue, and?
In having about a budget, yeah, if you're, once you set the revenues, you're gonna, you're gonna match your expenses.
Right, yes.
We know that we'll at least have the $7,853,376. Moving in, the Victims Assistance Fund is one of the, it is what I would say the easier fund from a budget standpoint. Now, there were some things that we had to look at this year in this budget. Quick, little bit of information on the Victims Assistance Budget. A couple of years ago, there was a.
Do you want your vote to go to recess before the mayor?
Before the mayor?
What are you talking about? The mayor can take it as a.
You need to read your books sometime, man.
No.
Read the rubber's rules.
No.
That's crazy.
Go back in.
Olin, Olin, is that correct?
No, but let's go on, man. Having a.
Let's get on with the main challenge.
Before you may. The victim. So, over the past couple of years, we have been experiencing some less revenue coming in to the Victims Assistance Fund. In talking with chief about this, what's happened is, two, a couple of years ago, there was a Supreme Court judge that ruled, that had a ruling come down to the judges in the state that has had one part of an impact on the amount of money that we've been bringing in. But as well, I know that our judges have been, been offering people more scheduled time payments to pay their court fines, and those scheduled time payments have cut down on the amount of revenue that we've had coming in. Between those two things, we have seen, now, we have been in discussion with our town judges, with our clerk of court, Chief Oswald, myself, and there are multiple things that we feel like we can do to try and get this revenue back up. In working with the state, I believe it was Act 141, chief, am I correct in that? That there's some potential revenue there to get from the state that we've previously not been getting, we're looking into that. As well, we are talking with our judges with regards to this ruling from the Supreme Court, we think there's some changes that could possibly be made there that we're talking with them about. And then, we've also started using the municipal association set off debt program for the court, which we previously did not do. That will allow us to capture some revenue each year through the set off debt program.
When you say that you're making changes to that, you mean that you're forcing people who get a ticket before have come into contact with our court to pay more?
No.
Or to pay to not have payment plan?
No, that, so what's happened, just in a nutshell, real quick, is it used to be that if someone came to court and they were given a scheduled time payment, and they couldn't, they stopped making their payments.
Right.
A bench warrant could be issued for them, well, the Supreme Court judge came down and said, "You can no longer do that." What you have to do now is do a rule to show cause, they have to come back to court, and at that point, the judge can either sentence them to jail, or they could pay their fine in full, or they could extend the scheduled time payment even further. And I know that what's been occurring a little bit more is that they extend that scheduled time payment, and so that's just preventing some of the revenue from coming in, so.
What's the change to, you said you talked to the judge about it?
So, no, we're talking with them, and there's some, there's some things that we're gonna discuss about trying to.
No, what are those things?
I said we're going to discuss it.
Right, but what are you going to discuss, I'm trying to get at, what?
We're gonna talk about the rule to show cause right now, and what are we primarily doing? Is extending the payments, or are we ordering them, or issuing a bench warrant for them to go to jail, and trying to get more money brought in, if they've not paid the first time, trying to assert back, and if they gotta come back a second time, trying to capture more of the money at that point, versus extending scheduled time payments, which they've not made before.
Right.
That's just, those are a few things that we're looking at, that we feel like we can get.
If they couldn't afford to pay in a lot of period of time, they're not prepared to pay. If you don't extend the time, then what's gonna happen, you're gonna wind up sentencing them to jail, which is gonna cost us more money, the housing down the long run.
Well, they would be at least in the county, and at this point, that doesn't.
Does that affect the numbers on the budget?
So.
These questions?
What's that?
Does this affect the numbers on the budget?
No, it affects people.
No, I understand that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, the people.
While we have, okay.
And that's a part of the budget.
Yeah, I can.
I have a question, Tom, and that, can you, can you tell us who you're going to talk to, and go through that one more time? How are we gonna increase our actual funds coming in?
We're going to talk with our town judges, chief and I, and clerk of court, we're gonna sit down. We've already had just some minor discussions, not in detail. It's really about knowing exactly what that judge's order says, and our understanding of it is that if they don't pay their scheduled time payment, the next step is to issue the rule to show cause, which they're supposed to come back to court. If they don't show up to court, my understanding is, is that we haven't been issuing bench warrants at that point, but rather, we've just not really been doing any.
So, it sounds like we probably need to have a better procedure in place?
Procedurally, that's what we're wanting to talk with the judges about, is having more of a standard procedure.
How many town judges do we have?
Two, we have Judge Cook, who is the primary judge of the town, and then we have Judge Morgan, who is the local magistrate, but is contracted to be a secondary judge for the town.
Okay, 'cause, okay. So, those are the two people that, that staff is gonna talk to to see?
And also our clerk of court.
If there's a procedure in place, and secondarily, how we can either change that procedure, if we think it's too strict, or stick with that procedure to get more income.
Right, and we certainly can't dictate to the judges, but we would like to come up with a standard and a decision to try and treat things more consistently. We feel like that could help with stabilizing this budget for the future, and.
Ted, we're not.
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
We're not receiving any money?
It's nothing like it used to be, we're receiving about half of what we were.
But you're showing none, actually.
What's that?
You're showing victims assistance, zero.
Tom, that's the revenue.
Right.
Oh, no, 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 that's on the expense, that's, it comes in, that is an accounting pass through line item that duly company had us establish, it comes in, reflects for most of the month, and then at the end of the month, it clears out, shows us the revenue going in to the Victims Assistance Fund.
Okay.
Couple of things we did do, is we did, in talking with Chief Oswald, we did remove the training and travel and the office supply budget, budgeted line items within the Victims Assistance. The office supplies was really small, and really wasn't used on much of an annual basis, because she works at the PD, and there's generally plenty of supplies within the PD, so we removed that portion of it. As well as the training and travel, in attempt just to bring the budget down as much as possible, chief said that her training and travel for her Victims Assistance, he would just find from the PD training and travel.
Could you say her, who are you referring to?
BJ Morris, who services our Victims Assistance.
What's the money used for? The bulk of it?
The bulk, her salary, pretty much at this point, the Victims Assistance is set up to pay her salary, based on the revenue and expenses, nothing else. At this, at this point, we have the budget set.
These niggas already retired, right?
What's that, she retired, she was able to come back under the old retirement plan.
So, she's Terry?
Well, it's not the Terry program, she was just retired, Terry put a five-year max on it. She was just retired, was out for 30 days, and then retired five days. And so, we've set the revenue at $10,150, in hopes that some of this standardization and discussions will increase the amount of money coming in this year, and the set off debt program will help to bring some more in, and through those, we felt like we would set it there for this budget.
Ted, and now, how will this increase revenue?
What's that, well, set off debt is going to help capture through tax, the set off debt program goes through the tax system.
I mean, proposed changes that you say you're gonna talk about?
Well, hopefully, that it will, if, if scheduled time payments, and we're very supportive of scheduled time payments being put in place, and, and chief, and if at any point you feel like you can weigh in and provide anything, please do.
Help me understand.
Right.
So, if a person says, "A thousand dollar fine, they don't have a thousand dollars", so now, we give them a payment plan?
Right.
Right, so if we take away the payment plan, what would be the alternative?
Well, they would get the payment plan, but if they failed to pay, as what was agreed to with the judge.
Right, initially.
Back in the day, we would issue a bench warrant for their arrest, what the judge came back and said is, "You can't do that anymore." Now, you have to issue a rule to show cause, which they have to come back to court.
That's why they're not needing to pay their payments.
Right, as to why they, right, and they gotta talk to the judge about that, and the judge has the option to either, A, enforce the jail time at that point, B, make them pay in full at that time, or C, reissue another scheduled time payment.
So, you're gonna leave those three options in place?
Those three options are there, it's just, what's hurting now is if they don't show back up to court, technically, our understanding is, you have the ability at that point to issue a bench warrant. But I don't think the, I don't think the bench warrants have been issued quite as much, and therefore, it just goes to the set off debt program, and then you have to wait an entire year until you can submit it for tax deduction during taxes. Well, it's not trying to balance budget on back to people, it's just that.
They can't pay, man, if they can't pay, and now, what I hear you saying is, they can't pay, so you issue a rule to show cause, they come back before the court, and they still can't pay, what the judge is doing is saying, "Okay, I understand your situation, I'm gonna extend you another three months to come up with the money and pay", right? And what you're saying is.
And I'm not saying that that's a bad option, that's not what I'm saying.
Why would you?
What I'm saying is, a lot of the people are not showing back up to court.
Because we haven't issued the rule to show cause yet?
No, the issue, the rule to show cause is issued, they're given their court date, and they're not showing up. And then, at that point, rather than issuing a bench warrant, that, a lot of them are just being pushed to set off debt, well, set off debt doesn't come around but once a year to turn that in, and that.
So, what's your, so you wanna lock them up, basically?
No, that.
Yeah, because if you issue a bench warrant, they're gonna be locked up.
If you issue a bench warrant, it at least allows the opportunity, if they do, are found somewhere else, for our department to get them, they go back before the judge.
Right, you lock them up.
Against their attention.
But the way you get to, the way you get to go back before the judge, is that you get locked up.
Well, you would get locked up, if you have a bench warrant, and you encounter law enforcement.
Okay.
Looking at the weeds on budget item, it's not, we're out of the budget.
Well, we're not really, because what we're talking.
What I'm hearing, you're saying just related to court, not budget related to court.
Because he's trying to change his procedures. Yeah, he's trying to change his procedures. Yeah, he's trying to change his procedures, so he can increase the revenue in the budget, that's what he's saying. That's basically what he said, but we can move on, I'm just saying, as long as we understand what he's saying.
He's saying the revenue has reduced because of the.
Right, and he's trying to increase revenue.
I'm, I'm not hearing that.
Aren't you trying to increase revenue?
No, I'm trying to get it back to where it was.
He's trying to be fair, if someone gets a ticket, and we have a procedure, everyone's treated the exact same way.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying.
I think if we see that procedure, we.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but I'm not questioning the procedure, I'm just trying to get, everybody, I'm saying that.
We're, we're having to reduce revenue at this point, I'm not trying to increase revenue for the Victims Assistance Fund, I'm really trying to not continue to lose more and more, which is ultimately, the next thing that's affected is the salary of our Victims Assistance, if we can afford that.
Trying to stop the bleeding.
They're trying to stop the bleeding. So, revenue set at $10,150, and the projected expenses are just for our Victims Assistance salary at $10,150, and the employer contributions, and that's the Victims Assistance Fund. All right, if there's nothing else about that, we can move into the general fund. We are gonna start with the general fund budget summary. Our projected revenue for the general fund has been set at $4,149,926. You can see each, and we will go through each of, highlights of each of these budgets as we go through this. At this point right now, we have projected expenses of $4,095,070, with $54,856 remaining to balance the budget. And we will discuss some options and things in just a little bit for that $54,856.
What increases though, from last year?
As far as the revenue?
Yes.
The revenue is actually a reduction at this point from last year, and the majority of that reduction is based on our reimbursement for the new E911 dispatch system. If you recall, that was, I believe it was $121,000, and I'm doing that off the top of my head, in the general fund revenue budget, E911 revenue, I believe it's $121,000 reduced out of that, but that's because we had to purchase the new dispatch system, and we had that reimbursement of 80% coming from the state. So, this year, we won't have the dispatch system, so that revenue won't be coming in. But we also won't have the expenses for the new dispatch system. So, the revenue actually shows as a reduction, but it's primarily tied to the 911 system, dispatch system from this past year, current year. If that makes sense, sorry.
Is this the appropriate? Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
No, I was gonna say, is this the appropriate time to ask about the revenue, or would you like to talk about the revenue as we go through each budget?
No, once we get, I'm about to highlight the revenue, and then if we have some particular questions about the revenue, we can.
He's not going through the line item. He's not gonna go through the line item, he's just gonna.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going line item by line item, but if a member has a question about a line item.
Sure.
I'll do my best to, to answer that. Due to new development in residential and commercial properties, and permits, and additions, and things, some real property value, we've got extra real property taxes that have come in, you'll see an increase in the real property tax line item for this year, and that's based on what we've received. Also, due to the 15% SE&amp;G rate reduction, we did have to lower the franchise fee revenue down. If you weren't aware, SE&amp;G did a 15% rate reduction, or Dominion has done that as a part of the acquisition and merger, that's ultimately going to lower our franchise fee revenue down, because that's less money they're gonna be bringing in by reducing the rates, and we're 5% of the revenue that they bring in, we're 5%.
Who said the 5%?
What's that?
Who said the 5%?
The town did, we have a 5% franchise on SE&amp;G in Mid-Carolina, and Time Warner.
You can't go 10%, and then we'll get the same.
We just redid our franchise agreement, a couple of meetings ago.
They just broke, they reached it.
I don't.
They changed, they changed their rate.
There's nobody in the state at 10%, the highest rate is 5%.
Well, okay, but they, they reduced their, they reduced their rate 15%, which really kind of violates our agreement with them, so we have a right to renegotiate, but that's fine, we can keep going, I'm not going down that hill, go ahead.
They pretty much set the rate.
Well, not for the franchise, we set the franchise.
There we go.
Ted, are we, partially, will we be losing any money because of these little energy-saving things, their own houses? Does that affect us in any way?
Well, I mean, as people, yeah, solar panels can lead to less electric, electrical costs for homeowners, your, your, your hot water, tankless hot water heaters, LED lighting, there's many things that people are doing in their homes that conserve energy and lower their bill, as their bills lower, that's, that's less they pay, which is less franchise fee that comes in as well, so you've got a number of things that affect it. A mild winter can greatly affect what you bring in in franchise fees, energy savings, and obviously, rate reductions by the electrical company can affect it, so. But, on the bright side, as new homes are built, or new commercial buildings are built, and they tie on to SE&amp;G Electrical, that's added franchise fees that can be added, so there's a balancing act. We did have to reduce, and again, this kind of goes back to the discussion we just had in Victims Assistance, we had to reduce $38,000 from the revenue for state fines, fines and forfeitures that's coming in, and it all goes back to what we just discussed. We did, we're able to add new revenue based on the bank interest into the budget this year, that previously were unable to budget. And it was $121,000, Mr. Charles, that we had to reduce from the revenue in the general fund for this year, because that was all tied to the new dispatch system for this past year, which will not be included in the current budget, or the fiscal year 1920 budget. Garbage revenue, as we're aware, they, they're putting their CPI increase in place, so that's obviously going to affect the garbage revenue, as well as the garbage expense that's within the street department, we'll talk about that here shortly. Garbage, garbage revenue, as we're aware, they, they're putting their CPI increase in place, so that's obviously going to affect the garbage revenue as well as the garbage expense that's within the street department, we'll talk about that here shortly.
The, the garbage revenue is more or less a pass through?
It is, it is.
Have we broken out what is, um, pass through revenue versus, you know, non-pass through, so we understand, we don't really control that, council?
Right, right.
The town?
Right, we, we collect all the money for advance disposal, we cut them one check every month.
Right, do we have that, can we break that out of revenue? So we know what's pass through and what's not?
But it's still a revenue coming in.
It is pass through.
But it, it still, it still comes in and goes out, it's, it's a revenue.
And we reflect a revenue line item and an expense line item. Now, the expense line item includes a couple other things and, and it includes the payment we made to Lexington County for the Saluda County properties that, that are being disposed of, Lexington County landfill, as well as a couple dumpsters we have for the county, we pay for, um, at the water plant, places like that, we've got a couple dumpsters and we pay for. And then, our main, uh, our multiple big dumpsters, we have it out at, uh, our maintenance facility, that when we do have to pick up in bulk items, then dumped in a creek, we put it in and there's a disposal cost.
So, I mean, I just, to, to know, I would personally just like to know what the pass through, um, revenues are, cause, uh, grades are also part of our pass through...
I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm just not understanding what...
Ted, I might be able, it, can, may I speak on that? Um, on the revenue under garbage fees, the eighteen nineteen actual was two hundred and thirty-two thousand nine seventeen, but...
As of...
As of four eleven?
Yeah. Okay, and so, that's probably one of my questions, we have projected three hundred and thirty thousand, which is about a hundred thousand dollar difference, is that because...
Well, we still have a couple months left, that was as of April eleventh, we still have May and June, that, I was just giving you where it stood at as of April eleventh, that line item, but that, that number will be changing.
We'll come up with a home about...
Okay.
Between now and then, the, the fiscal budget year.
So, you think, so is it running about fifty thousand a month?
Yeah, it's, Julie, I know you, you cut the check, we're bringing, it's around fifty, fifty something thousand dollars a month. Oh, it's twenty something, twenty...
Yeah.
It's twenty something thousand dollars a month.
So, we probably, and the, the reason I'm questioning is, before we can budget expenses, we have to know that our revenue projections are correct.
Right.
And, I think, and I will, I have just a, a list that I have not had time to go over with you, that, that I'll share.
Well, and what we...
This shows that we're, to me anyway, that we're projecting about a hundred thousand more on garbage fees than what we actually spent, still having two months. So, I'm, I'm thinking that some of our revenues may be inflated, so we have to be cautious about them spending based on that revenue is...
Well, there's a couple things to take into account, and, and again, I don't have the general ledger right in front of me, one, that takes into account the CPI increase for advanced disposal.
It's a bit interesting, right? The, the kinda point I was trying to make, but you made it a lot better than I think.
So, the factors that are taken into account, if, if we look, I've, I've got a, a revenue spreadsheet, that month by month, I put exactly what we're bringing in, what we're sending out. And, and, and what I do is click and drag and it, I take the average over nine months of what we're doing per month, and I do that times twelve.
Why don't we see that though?
Well...
Why don't we see this?
But we got into every, every revenue and expense that I track, we would be here for days.
Well, I'm not talking about, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go discuss it, but I'd certainly like to see it, that's what I'm saying.
And the, alright.
So, would, would it be acceptable to you and to council, if some of these questions that I've gone line by line, that, that I think that the revenue might be inflated, or the revenue might be low? Would it be alright if I give this to Ted and he can get back to us with the answers on this?
How about you submit it for the record? And we all get a copy of it.
This is just based on my own personal, going through the budget?
Well, I'm just saying, we all need to see it if you wanna, mess up to you, but...
Okay.
That's what we, we would normally do, we, we submit it to Julie as part of the record.
So, the other thing that's taken into account is the CPI increase, so the rates are obvi- obviously going up, so you, you have to look at, you have to look at, cause our average monthly number of customers fluctuates up, it fluctuates down, so...
But that's why I wanna be fair on this.
The way that I projected, as I take, I, I, I'm looking at, what did we do for July, August, September, October, and I take the average of all of those months, and I do that average times twelve. But then, taking the CPI increase into account, you have to add some additional revenue onto that, because you're gonna be bringing in more due to the higher rate.
I just love to see the wrong numbers, personally.
Alright, she'll, she'll submit them and I'll, I'll do my best to get all the answers in a timely fashion, so...
Do you share with us?
Sure.
Is that alright, Richard?
Sure.
Looking at general fund, now, these, what I'm gonna now, highlight now is expenses that aren't necessarily tied to one particular budget, but they're kind of across the board for the general fund. Uh, each general fund, but, departmental budget accounts for a half a percent increase in employer medical contributions that took effect January first, two thousand nineteen, we had a budget for that. Uh, our workers' compensation rates, for the most part, across the board, were reduced down this year, which is a great thing. We did have, um, a couple positions that the rates increased, and, and that's just based on the national standard that they, they set the rates and the risk for the job. Um, those were, those were accounted into the workers' comp line items for this year. Um, all the budgets and positions are, have the one percent increase in South Carolina retirement system employer contribution for this year included. This current draft budget that you have currently does not have a staff cost of living built into it, but administration has included the total cost to do a two percent employee cost of living raise this year that, that we will talk about in just a little bit. Uh, each department budget, um, has seen, just as we're gonna have less revenue coming in because of electricity, all of our expense, electricity expense line items for our departments are also going to be reducing, so there is a little bit of return on that standpoint. Um, and no requested capital at this point has been included, except you will see capital reflected in the fire department's budget, um, has been included. And we will discuss capital requests and additional requests by departments in just a little bit. What I mean by the fire department is their capital expense line item, there are things, fire hose, bunker gear, things that we always buy on an annual basis, um, that are included there. There's no new additional capital in the fire department that's been added at this point. Looking at, just got a pie chart here to kind of put it in perspective, um, the makeup of the general fund expenses. You'll see that the police department is forty-eight percent of the budget, uh, with...
Is that a reduction?
Actually, I believe it has reduced down in percentage, I think it was up closer to fifty, forty-nine or fifty, fifty-one, um, over the past couple years. Um, fire and administration make up both thirteen, with the non-departmental at seven, police, public works at seventeen percent, uh, for fire and administration. So, moving into council budget. Current budget amount for the council budget is fifty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Um, the current bu- draft budget that council has does not reflect compensation at this point, but the option, there is an option for council compensation that has been given to you guys, um, in the additional request section, uh, that was sent out for council to consider, it was an option for you guys to consider. You certainly don't have to take that option, there can be other options, but we will discuss that here in just a little bit further. This isn't, this is an election year, so this year, we needed to, to, uh, budget for some election expenses as we have an election this November. So, you would see that, uh, those, those projected expenses were added into the budget.
Ted, what expenses do you have since the county is conducting?
We have to pay the county to conduct ours, our elections for us. Uh, generally, it's anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars.
Very low.
Depends on if there's runoffs and, and special elections or just standard elections, there's, there's different things that can influence that, but, um, it generally ranges between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars on an election.
Do you know what it was costing us to, uh, uh, do our own election?
No, sir, I do not, since I've been here, uh, the county's done it, I'm not real sure.
Previously, it cost the town more than the county did, because we, the town did not have the head of running the election.
And I know there's a lot that goes into, to the election process, and that was part of the decision to move it to Lexington County, was there was quite a bit of staff time put into that, organizing that, so... Um, one thing to keep in mind, we just talked about auditing services last meeting, um, the new rate will not be in effect for this budget. We still have to pay the, the previous rate, cause duly and company will be doing the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, the one we're in now, and that's gonna be at the same rate, it'll be next year's fiscal budget that we will be able to bring that price down to the new price that was given.
So, now, by law, although we have to do, though we do our, um, attorney, judge, and the auditing, that, that, those that come under council, every, like, every, every election year, we have to do that every two years. Um, so how does that work with the contract, cause we have a long-term contract with, um...
If you, it's, it's, they have a contract, length of the contract is what it's...
It's supposed to be every two years, maybe? Did, did you know that?
No, I think the only thing that, I think what reappoints is, is the, from what we've done previous years, we've not done auditing previous years.
I, I think all of the council's, um, employees, or charges should have to be, uh, reappointed every two years.
I don't believe your indigent defense and your auditing services fall within that, uh, your town attorney, uh, the...
Judge.
The judge and...
Clerk is for... The, the clerk reports to, to the manager, she's, uh, regular, uh, employee, but I think the, uh, auditor might fall into that, that arena, we'll have to see. It might be, um, professional services, I don't know, but I thought the auditor really kind of reported to council, was a council appointee, which means that every two years...
It's not, it's not a council appointment, it's a contract that's approved by council.
Right, but it can change every two years, the council can change every two. So, I'm just saying that we, we wear that as we go forth further, with the extended contract, I think we contract with them for years, right?
I mean, we're, we're putting together a four-year contract.
Okay, but when, as you do that, you have to let them know that this council cannot bind a future council. You understand what I'm saying? So that, that contract needs to be two years, because a future council could come in and void that contract and go with another service.
Well, I do think there are exceptions because, to, to, to the law, because then, every contract that council approves would technically fall, which means advanced disposal...
No, no, only, only, only the, um, folks that report to council, only council's responsibility, council has the town manager, the town attorney, and, um, Ted, and the judge. And this auditor, I think, falls in that category also, I'm not belaboring this, I'm just saying, if that's the case, then every two years, we can only, we can only contract with them for two years, because this council cannot bind, uh, bind a future council in a contract. That's all I'm saying, am I right?
Okay.
Did you say that, that was...
Yeah, he's...
Cause didn't we just, with this new auditing firm, it was two years?
We, we get four. Didn't you know we have the right to void that contract?
I'm just saying, yeah, but a future council can void that contract, they need to know that, that's all I'm saying, they need to know that, this council cannot bind a future council to a contract.
About a town without a council.
No.
Town with a contract.
No, that contract, a future council cannot contract, anyway, it's a legal thing, but a future con- a future council cannot, this council cannot bind a future council to that auditing contract, because it's our prerogative every two years.
Can we not sign any...
Only for those things that we control, actually, not for the whole town.
But y'all actually control every contract, you know, controlling things...
I understand that, but that's, that's separate, only when council...
So, the contract was safe, going to come in, we can't bind the next council to that contract either?
The things that council, um, control, as far as, which is the judge...
And manager.
I mean, that's why we, that's why we vote on them every two years.
I don't think...
And I think auditor comes under that, that's all.
And, 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 and I'll be, I'll, I'll reach out, I'll reach out, huh?
It's gonna be the same as a contract with...
How can we do it every two years then?
I don't know, I mean...
Because it, because it falls under that.
I don't think it's, but I don't think so.
Okay. I only, we just told you that it is, but you can think what you wanna think. And all I'm saying is that we need to find that out before we vote on a four-year deal with it, that's all, let's find out. Because I, I, I really think that we, we...
You can vote on a four-year deal.
Right.
Okay? The, the, the next council comes in, has the prerogative to look at all contracts.
Right.
Do away with them, extend them for one year.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling them.
The only three, the only three positions that the council must, uh, reappoint are your judge and your lawyer and your...
Right.
Auditor.
Auditor, yeah, auditor, I think falls under two, cause we always do it at the front council meeting, but that's what...
Ask Ted, it's like a...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
I'm gonna research it. Alright, moving into the administration budget, um, current budget amounts, five hundred and two thousand four hundred. Uh, the most significant change that occurred, um, weren't a lot, weren't many changes within the budget, the most significant one, uh, was related to the building inspections for the town. Uh, previously, we had budgeted for a part-time building inspector, um, we've had little interest in the position since it's been posted, um...
Ted, can you go back for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't quite ready to finish with the council budget, I might have one last question. We have, last year, we spent eleven thousand dollars basically, three, three bucks on travel, um, but yet, we have budgeted seventeen thousand...
So, we, we have the municipal association meeting that we're getting ready to be paying for anybody that wants to go to the municipal association meeting. And we're gonna have the upfront fees for that, which is gonna be potentially lodging, our hotel registration costs, and I'll tell you, the M A S E registration, if, last year with six members, was pretty bulky. Um, and, and putting that together, I don't know how many members we have, but that's gonna run it up some.
Right, it's just hard to, if, when, when we have these, these items that are like ten months and then we're looking at a, at a year, as we're requesting.
It is.
So, in the past, do you know approximately how much that conference, we spent on that conference?
It, well, it all depends, this past year, we had five members attend, one, two, three, four, five, we have five members attend. Previous years, we've had...
Do you remember about how much we spent on those five, on the fire?
It's gonna be right around fifteen hundred dollars per member.
For a part-time, he gets to...
But if only two members go one year, it, we're gonna come in under, what we're budgeting based off of is fifteen hundred dollars a member, which is going to cover each member to do the municipal association meeting every year.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Now, since you opened it back up again, now, um, wait, I don't know if we all know, but I, you know, I'm serving on the National League of Cities Committee, and there are, um, there's a win- uh, summer...
It was the, it was the, um...
The Small Cities.
Small City Summit.
Okay, the Small City Summit is in Camden.
Camden.
Right, so, I, I figured that it would be about, um, three hundred bucks, and I, plus travel, probably about, um, twelve hundred bucks.
What's the rate, do you remember the registration?
I don't know what the registration was, but about twelve hundred, but I would like to, to put eight hundred in and I'll pave my way with the rest of them into that budget, if that's okay with everybody. And it's just a one-year, uh, appointment, so, I think that's pretty fair, we, we do, you know, the coun- council... And it's just a one-year appointment, so I think that's pretty fair. We, we do, you know, the coun, council does eight hundred, I do about four hundred bucks.
For what purpose is that?
This is the National League of Cities. They have, I'm on the small cities.
I'm aware.
Yeah, so they have in, um, a summer meeting.
I'm aware of that.
I'm aware of the meeting.
Okay.
So what I was asking council is to cover eight hundred out of the twelve hundred bucks for that.
So adding an additional eight hundred to the training and travel.
For, do you have coming by here?
Up, upcoming.
What month was that?
I wanna say it's in July.
October.
No, 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 you're talking about the, you're talking about the league, not, not the National League, not the, the meeting in Washington. This is a separate meeting in Camden that's coming up.
I'm aware, I've been there on October.
No, it's in June. It's either June or July. Hold on a second. At the same time.
So now you wanna put eight hundred dollars in the budget for you to attend that meeting?
Right.
Why?
Why, why?
What if everybody wanted to go to that meeting?
They can't go.
Yes, they do.
They're not on board.
No, you have to be a board member to attend that meeting.
Well, if somebody was gonna go, I don't have a problem to go.
Any council will ever come and attend.
Okay, do you, do you wanna go?
I'm going.
Would that not come out of the, the standing travel, travel tents line item? Would that not just come out of the, the standing travel tents?
If there's money, if there's enough money in there.
If, each member, that fifteen hundred dollars for each member, pretty much covers the municipal association meeting and probably hometown legislative action day, um, type expenses. Another conference, and then we budgeted two people to go to National League of Cities Conference in Washington. So if another member wanted to go, it would take over to fifteen hundred dollar mark, I do know that.
And that's, that's just an average.
Now, if we don't have everybody, if all nine members don't go to the municipal association meeting in July, you have some remaining funds out of that. But if all nine members were to go, you wouldn't have the extra money.
That's the green book, green bill.
That's the green book.
That's the green.
I'm good, I'm okay. I mean, that, that, you answered all my questions, thank you.
I only intend to, to attend this year's annual conference, so that would free up money for that. I'll, I'll, maybe I have to go.
All right, that's cool.
So we, we go to that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Because you can't do that. If you're gonna put money in the budget, it's for everybody.
He didn't put money in the budget, Jason just said he not going.
But if, if money in the budget.
Oh, you said, you just said you're not going, right?
I only, I only tend to go to the.
Okay, there you go, you're swiping his money.
We gotta vote as a council.
Okay, we will vote. We really don't have to vote on that, he just said he not going.
So it's this administrative function, I think.
Right, now you can come to council and, and ask to go, and then.
That's not the rule, but yeah.
We can ask, ask Ted if their funds are available.
Then we go. Okay, but that's not really the rule, but we can do that. If there's the money left over, it needs the council person requesting.
That's not the rule.
Uh, what's been done in the past is, i- if you go to the M A S E annual meeting and you exhaust, what is the fifteen hundred dollars you're allotted? And another member doesn't go and you wanna, thank you, sir, and you wanna, um.
Go somewhere else.
Go somewhere else, it's traditionally been brought back to council and.
That's, that's why I wanted to put it in the budget, so you don't have to go through that process of, uh, of putting, but.
And.
And if Washington, he can add that money to the, uh, he can add that money to the budget. It's only eighty bucks.
We'd have to move everybody. Just let me do it.
Everybody not on the board, but anybody that wanna go can go.
I would say, if you're looking for a recommendation from me, I would say when that time comes.
I'm sorry, I brought it up.
All right, I'm just saying, if you, if you went, you wouldn't be doing anything official.
Larry, can we move on?
Are you on?
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Which one are you gonna do next?
You wanna say that?
Administration.
Huh?
Administration.
All right, move on.
Administration budget's next. Going around, keeping up. So, going back in, previously, we, we had budgeted for a part-time inspector, um, and since it's been open, we've had little to no interest in. It's, it's really hard to find a part-time building official, and we've done some calling around and talking with different cities, and everybody's really got shortages right now. Millennials are not getting in to the profession of, of building official, and there's a shortage of building officials statewide. But, so as you'll recall, we did the, um, temporary contract with Safe Bill to provide building inspection services and plan reviews for the town. I can tell you that in speaking with the staff that works with them every day, permit clerks and, 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 uh, Pat in zoning administrative role, and in talking with contractors, there's a lot of positive feedback so far on Safe Bill and the job that they're doing.
What happened to, uh, Willis?
He resigned.
Why?
From the town. Say you wanna focus on city planning?
Now, who signed, who signed off on Wiz's, the work that we have given out? Who signed off on it? Because we all libra for that.
My understanding is that project shut down and done.
As a budget?
There's not a perm, there's.
He's talking about work shutdown, he's not talking about budget.
Okay, well, the reason why I ask that is he's talking about building inspector.
Yeah.
That we had before, which is a part-time job.
But we, but we, we no longer have, and what I'm saying is, is I, I don't foresee us filling that position with the town. I think it's gonna be difficult because there's just a shortage of building officials out there, building in state.
Ted, I have one quick question on that. When we were, um, in one session, that we did talk, that we were, that the staff was going to check with um, quite a few of the surrounding towns to see if we could share one, because thirty-six thousand dollars for that is a new line item. Granted, we, we don't have our inspector to pay, but, um, I, I would, I would caution us that, have we done a good, a thorough job?
The way their con, well, the way their contract is written, it's an eighty-twenty contract, oh, sorry.
Um, have we done a good job making sure that we've exhausted all the possibilities of sharing? That's my only thing.
We, I know the town of Saluda utilizes Safe Bill. Um, Saluda County now utilizes Safe Bill. We did reach out. The only way Lexington County is open to their inspectors is if we turn complete building permits and all that over to Lexington County as a whole.
How much would that save us?
Well, it would just get us out of the building inspection and permitting. The, the downfalls and what we.
It would save us thirty-six thousand dollars then.
But we would have no revenue coming in either. It would cut the revenue, but it would also.
I'll say this as a builder, Lexington County is already short-staffed. They're one of the jurisdictions that doesn't have enough building inspectors. I think they're two men down currently. And their plan reviewer, who is supposed to be a full-time in the office job, is not doing inspectors for them. If we add our building roles to them, I don't know that we would get the kind of service.
How many do we have for a year?
How many inspections?
How many do we have per month? I mean, I'm trying to figure out.
We have, I, I would say, I would say we have hundreds a month.
Not enough for a full-time person.
No, it's not enough for, that's the thing. We don't, we don't have enough to justify a full-time building inspector at this point.
If you contract, if you contract with, with the county, can we put, um, can we put language in the contract that addresses what Jason said?
There is no contract with the county. We would, we would get out of.
We would get completely.
Building, but everybody who wants to build here would have to go to Lexington County to file for a permit.
Right.
They have to go to Lexington County to apply, to request their inspections. Everything would have to happen at the county level. And it's, from a builder's perspective, it's much better as a builder to deal locally with some local people.
And people, the comment is made very often that they would rather come here and deal with us than to have to go to Lexington County.
That's not bad.
If we catch, if code enforcement catches some roofers doing a roof, and, who didn't pull their permits or licenses in advance, rather than coming to town hall right here in town and being able to get that permit, they would have to go all the way to Lexington County.
I like the idea of having a home person and not that.
How much time do we get for thirty-six thousand dollars? I mean, how, what if we have.
Again, it's.
Triple our inspections, is that before the annual?
It's an eighty, it's an eighty-twenty concept, and, and that's what the contract that came, so they would get, if we have forty-six thousand in revenue um, projected, they would get eighty percent of that revenue would show as an expense going out, and we get to keep twenty percent. And again, we, the, basically, the way we did it is we looked at how much revenue we've brought in and permitting over the past couple of years. We've got that, and then we took the percentage that would be for Safe Bill, and that's what we projected the expense at.
Thank you, that answers, thanks.
And just, and, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I wanna make sure. Um, they only get paid based on permits pulled and fees paid. We're not just paying them a lump sum of thirty-six thousand dollars. It, they, they're paid based on how, how much work takes place in the town.
Yeah, if we have a slow permitting year, revenue will be down, but their expense will be down. If we have an extremely busy, we could exceed our revenue, but we could exceed our expenses as well. It just depends on how much development and, and building occurs that year, so.
What's the difference? Well, I mean, thirty-six thousand, you can't tell me you can't, we can't find somebody to do it.
We may not spend thirty-six.
But we can't find somebody that'll be doing it for thirty-six thousand?
Building official, for us to get a full-time building official with the town, we would have to pay probably fifty thousand dollars. Well, we've been trying, there's just, there's no interest in part-time.
Well, there's certified. Anyway, I, I would like to see, what have we done?
Look, and, and we're gonna do it here if we don't.
Yeah, but what have we done to find that person?
We've reached out to other cities too to talk to them.
Well, we, we haven't advertised that, that position.
It's been, it's been on the municipal association website, which is where a lot of people who are building official look for jobs that are open. And we've put it on the town website, um, indeed.com.
You put it on the town site? State?
Thank you.
Are we finished with administration? Can we go back a minute?
To that one?
Yes, yes. Now, am I the only member of council who feel like that in addition to going to the meetings, learning and, um, developing as a, um, professional, that council's time is worth something? That council should receive a stipend also? Am I the only member of council who feels that way?
Nobody else mentioned it, and I'm just.
Later, later. I thought Ted said he was gonna address that something later.
We were.
We need to discuss it.
No, I, I agree, but I think it's, it's later.
Well, I mean, if y'all wanna go, if y'all wanna go.
Later this evening is what I anticipate, I don't.
Oh, this evening?
Yeah, this evening, this evening. In just a little bit, I was gonna get to the list of additional requests, and that's one of the items on there.
Man, that scares me, scares me. When you put stuff to the end, when everybody read it.
That's everybody's wish list is at the end. Right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I mean, you call it wish list.
Well, I mean, you know, they can't.
The request and requests by people. I, I knew that there was a request for council compensation, and so, again, I threw an option out. It's not one you have to go with, but it's in, it's taking it back to the way it was previously, it's option out.
What did you, uh, just go to the budget?
Because council's not directing me as a majority to put council compensation in the budget. That was something that y'all were going to discuss. And then if everybody agrees or majority agrees, we would include it.
Ted, you wanna talk about it now, or?
I mean, we can, we can, we can.
No, I'm just saying.
We could circle.
You remove us along, and we'll do it at the end. What are you, what are you gonna do?
I'd like to stay on schedule with God, frankly, just so we don't get confused.
We will be coming back.
Don't arrest me when we get to the end.
No, no.
Well.
I don't disagree with you, I, you know, I'm, I'm.
It, it was slated to talk council compensation. It's just, we were gonna get through each of the budgets and get to that point. Um, fire department budget, uh, budget amount four hundred and ninety thousand. Um, really, we've had, fuel is something that we've had to increase in this budget. With the increased call volume and you take the fuel mileage of these fire trucks, or you take the increased call volume, it's, it's taking that fuel usage line item up. Um, again, electrical cost, uh, the fire department got proactive, we got a energy grant, installed LED lighting, um, in conjunction with the reduced rates. That has cut the electricity line item in that budget tremendously. Um, and again, I mentioned it earlier, with regards to their capital line item, it's one of the only budgets that you'll see that currently reflects funds in a capital line item. But again, those are every year costs that we have. There's no new additional capital that, that has been inserted into their budget. There are numerous line items that have fluctuated up and down, um, slightly, but that, again, that's just based on what we're seeing with those line items.
Are you adding firefighters?
Um, and again, when we get to the request in a little bit, there, there was a request by the fire department for three new firefighters.
Is that reflected in there or not?
It is, it's reflected in what we're gonna look at a little bit, along with council compensation.
In this budget, is that in there?
Oh, the three new firefighters have not been built into their budget at this point. The request and what it would take is, is on the list, that we'll talk about.
I move that we, uh, council, I move that we, uh, fire Jay Hendricks.
Oh, man.
We wanna hire his, we wanna hire his ten-year-old son to, uh.
Uh, we got a child labor law. There was, was for full-time.
Full-time?
Full-time fire.
We have how many now?
Five.
We have five, five.
Five full-time?
Three, three did their own shift load.
Chief feels we need three more?
Well, the, he, he's done his part by putting the request in so that we can have a discussion, so.
Not three.
And I will tell you, when we go into budget season.
Don't need three.
When we go into budget season, we, we, we say, put your request in. It can't be considered if you don't put a request in. It does not mean we have to go with it.
You gonna give him up to you to talk on that point?
Yeah, yeah, he can, he can speak when that time comes up. When we get to the request. All right, uh, court budget?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the fire department, the very last item, capital, and this is just a question. This year was forty-one thousand, but we're, we're saying it's gonna be twenty-two, four.
Where are you?
On the last line item for the fire department. And if that's ten months and it's been going up, are we covering ourselves?
No, most of the capital has already been purchased for this year. Um, and, and keep in mind, we had some items budgeted that we bought this year, like putting a new airline brake system in to the fire station, uh, that we're not gonna have this coming yet. That is just the reoccurring things we buy on an annual basis. Fire hose that becomes tampered, so. For the fire department? Yeah, we had some cap, we had capital. We purchased the new fire pickup truck this year. Uh, we had the airline brake system this year. Jay helped me out, helped remind me what all we had. Then we had our normal reoccurring fire hose, bunker gear.
Yeah, fire hoses and bunker gear, as you mentioned, of course.
Uh, miniature pagers.
The, yeah, hey, you, we, we, just kind of, just replace some things as, as they cycle out. Uh, bunker gear helps to enable life span for natural centers. So that, that's about, just to coat and pants would be about two thousand dollars. For, for forty, forty fire hoses, that's pretty, pretty, can't be quite for a session, just to maintain.
And the standards are high on those for very good reasons.
Uh, and I think, but, I don't even know the front of it, but we've got capital line item dropped this week, so.
Right, right. Last year, we had a pickup truck in, in that line item. So it's taken back down to what are the year-to-year reoccurring expenses at this point, with no additional requests added in at this point.
At this time?
At this time.
Okay.
All right, the court budget, um, hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred. Just to note, there were no significant changes with this budget this year. Just some minor increases and decreases to some of the line items. Police department budget, um, current budget amount is one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
This is probably something I just don't know. I, I know that Robert Cook is, was appointed judge not, but a year ago, two years ago?
Reappointed.
Reappointed.
Well, actually, what we did was we took him to contract. He previously did not have a contract. And, um, he had requested some insurance and a contract, and all that was done at one time. But he's been the judge now for, for a number of years.
Okay, and did we pick up the cost of his employed benefits? So that was like an increase in his salary?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
And? Okay, I guess. We'll talk about that later, but, I mean.
This is your question?
Right, well, no, well, it's in his new contract. My question is, weren't we paying him just a, as a judge? And then when, when we had a contract with him, I, what I heard was that we didn't raise his salary. We just went in from not, a non-contract to a contract. However, if we're giving employee benefits on top of that, that certainly is an increase. In a salary, so I would like to know what that increase was to provide him with the employee benefits. Cause that's basically a raise, which may be fine, I just, yeah, I need to know that.
Because, because, because he's, because he is, um, a J D, he's actually a lawyer. And most judges are not, most Manchester judges have a high school diploma, so, he's actually, so what? You need no credentials at all to be a judge, right?
So, I'm saying, is that a good expenditure is what I'm asking?
I think so, because.
What we was paying him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because.
The only thing, what was added was full family, full family medical is what was added. And it was right around eleven thousand a year for the full family medical.
Okay. And I think that's fair for what he gets, for what he gets. And we didn't give him a raise, we just paying, he didn't, he was not getting the money in his hand. Right.
He gets a little bit of a raise.
Yeah, but I mean, he's not getting it, we're paying that.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Police.
All right, um, for the police department budget, um, again, one of the, one of the biggest changes that occurred was going back to the new dispatch system. That last year, there was a hundred and forty-something thousand dollar expenditure, uh, for a new dispatch system, which we received eighty percent of that, that money back. But that's taken out of this year's fiscal budget, so that's affecting the bottom line, um, more significantly than anything. Again, going back to what we talked about with victims assistance and dealing revenue with fines and fees. We're also able to reduce down what we're having to send the state and state fines, cause we're not receiving as much, so we're not having to pay out to the state as much as we were. With the installation of the new dispatch system, we, uh, one of the things that we had to have before was a dedicated phone line for NCIC. Secured line, uh, to SLEAD for NCIC. Uh, with the new system, we no longer had to have that, so that was able to pull four thousand, uh, the new dispatch system was able to pull, pull four thou, put four thousand back into the budget. But we did receive a grant for a new fingerprint scanner. There's no more ink on a card, it'll all be digital now, and when those fingerprints are put in, it will go directly into SLEAD's database. Versus having to send the cards and maintain cards. There is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar annual expense that's been added to have that piece of technology. A little bit of offsetting from the NCIC to the fingerprint scanner from a maintenance cost standard. Um, those were some of the bigger, um, things that, that changed. One thing to note, um, as well is, in the past, in the police department, we've had a number of vacancies that would exist throughout the years, people come and then you get into hiring, when you get around the hiring, there always tended to be vacancies. We, this past year, we've really retained a lot of police officers and haven't had a lot of vacancies. So, the salary line item has not always been funded at the total number of employees, because there's always been vacancies throughout the year. And we were basically eating up a lot of money in the budget. This year, we're going to be all but about to break even and we feel like if we're gonna retain, we need to add a little bit more to that salary line item if, if we're not having the vacancies like we used to have. Because we just don't have the number of vacancies that we've had in the past, it was.
Uh, you done?
Go ahead.
I, I really wanna hear from Chief on this. But is it possible for us to, instead of writing tickets on the blue ticket for the state? Is it possible for council to, um, issue tickets based on town ordinances? Which means that we would get all that revenue?
State law, uh, does not let you write traffic tickets on these, but a state traffic ticket.
Right.
You can write town ordinances, but you can't regulate traffic only on a state ticket.
I'm talking about like, uh, disorderly conduct, any other type of offense where we can write that ticket. If we write a ticket for disorderly conduct, it's a town violation, then town gets that money, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, council, we need to look, well, that's true, we need to look at it, but.
Let's go back to what we discussed earlier, but if they're not gonna pay it, they're not gonna pay it.
Well, I understand, but I'm saying, but if they, when they do pay it.
We get to make, you are exactly correct.
Well, that's, that's a way of raising revenue, um, for the town versus.
We're writing disorderly conduct on a hundred and ten orders.
Right, but we don't have to do it on separate tickets.
It doesn't matter on that.
Well, so that money come, that money comes to us?
Because it's a non-traffic thing.
Okay, so all non-traffic offenses come to the town and not go to the state?
Not all, no, the state has a list.
Right.
What we have to listen, what we have to send fines to them, to them, and what we don't.
Right, it, that's why I'm telling council, if the, if our police department writes more tickets, that, that revenue stays with the town. Because they kinda overlap, which you can write a ticket for, that, um, you know, it might be a same, a fifth, but if you call it something else, that's a town violation, that money comes with it. So, we might need to look at that as a way to raise the revenue for victims assistance, earmark it for victims assistance. Or to the court for, for doing that, instead of going to a general fund, which would become an issue, maybe a legal issue. Trying to balance the budget on the back of those tickets, but that's a way to get some revenue.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's a victim involved in anything, that cannot be written under a town ordinance, because.
Anything that has, any, any law that has a, any violation of the law, has a victim, we have to pay eleven, twenty, fifteen, two digits.
But it has to be on a state ticket, it can't be on a municipal one.
And I'm not getting into what's.
The state has been doing a very good job of putting fees and census charges and, uh, and we have to comply with those.
Right.
Towns and the town, this town's, this county just got in trouble for not setting it up.
But if it's a, if it's a violation of a town ordinance and our officers write a ticket that's a violation of town ordinance and it doesn't conflict with the state, we get that revenue, that's all I'm saying. So, we need to look at that.
And that's occurring now, isn't it?
Right, we write up a town ordinance.
Right.
Well, can, we need to break that out so we can see if you wanna increase something, and it's, you know, you can have the officers write more tickets under the town ordinance versus if it's a comparable offense, if we have an option. Okay, so that's what I'm saying, this is an opportunity.
What they achieve is, when you have that option, you write it under the town ordinance, so they're already working.
I'd like to see that broken out in, in, in the stats, if we can do that, so we can see how many, how much of money's coming from town ordinance violations versus the state. All right?
And I know the state's closed the gap and, and gotten the Supreme Court to, to side with them in some rulings, because there were a lot of small towns a few years ago.
Yeah, it can.
That were creating town ordinances for speeding, creating town ordinances for that, so that they could not have to send the state anything. And basically, just Supreme Court jumped in and said, oh, no, we're not going out.
Cause when that took place, I was a victim.
I know one of the cities that was, that was hot and heavy doing it.
New Perry was one.
This one's like you're going to Myrtle Beach on three seventy-eight, I won't, I won't bow my mouth, but.
Let's get the budget, that's your budget, huh, Charles?
Street department, AKA Public Works, budget. At six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred, as it's currently budgeted. This is the, this is the budget in which we reflect our advanced disposal trash expenses going out is within this.
So, that's a pass-through?
Is within this budget, this is the money we send out.
How much is the pass-through?
Well, not all that's pass-through, some of that are town services that we pay for, dumpsters.
Yeah, but how much of it is pass-through?
The, look at the equivalency of what we bring in.
We gotta highlight like that, it's hard to read.
Yeah, it's in black and white, cause it's actually a lighter grade, but when printed like that, it came out a little dark. I don't have that broken out on what, how much of that is town, how much of, I know eight thousand of that is, is going to Lexington County for the Saluda County residents that, that their trash is being taken to Lexington County.
And that's some of the garbage collection line, is that one?
So, so we've got, uh, at this point, there's a discussion that we need to kinda focus on. And that is talking about recycling, because what's not reflected in this that we've got to talk about. We know advanced dispo, disposal has done their annual CPI increases. But since July, y'all go back to the recycling conversation that we had in the work session about the rising cost of disposing of recycling. Since July twenty eighteen, it has increased from twenty-five dollars a ton to eighty-three dollars a ton.
Is that glass?
A lot of, a lot, glass is heavy.
Tonnage is the same, I mean, it's just the, the, for the triple, recycle whatever you recycle.
I mean, the cost, the cost has gone from twenty-five to eighty-three, but your tonnage fluctuates up and down depending on the.
Because of the difference, the price for, for glass now.
Well, no, China is killing, China's shut down receiving recycling and nobody knows where to take it at this point. And so much of the recycling is contaminated that they can't do anything with it. So, what we're getting at is if rates continue to increase and we look at our average monthly tonnage that we're bringing in, we should expect up eight thousand dollars in surcharges. Remember, we are charged a surcharge monthly based on the tonnage that was brought in last month in recycling, its weight. Um, and then it's at that, that day's rate when it's disposed of. So, we're looking at up to eight thousand dollars in surcharges, that is not currently included in the budget.
That's eight thousand dollars on an annual basis, it's not a monthly expense.
This is not a monthly, annual, annual, we're looking at around eight thousand a year based on what's been occurring with the recycling market. And then based on what our discussion with advanced disposal was being, that we're at least gonna be maintaining around this eighty-three dollar mark or even getting higher moving forward. So, I gotta bring it up. We, we either build eight thousand dollars in our budget to, to account for this additional cost. Or we have already calculated, based on our average number of customers a month that we have, to pass the cost on to customers would mean twenty-seven cent a month to make up the eight thousand dollars. In a, well, in addition to the forty-two cent CPI increase, that would be sixty-nine cent a month if we were gonna pass the recycling cost on to the customer. Versus budgeting for that cost.
Yeah, that's minimal, but it's gonna be more of a psychological thing that we.
I, I don't disagree with you, I'm, I'm just putting this information out for the sake of discussion, because options to consider for this budget are, we absorb the eight thousand dollars that we're, we're looking at costing us for this coming year. We either pass it on, we pass it on to the customer. Or we end recycling collection, period, which some cities are going to, um, a lot of others aren't in favor of it, but.
It's a little costly to live long enough.
And, and it could end up in the street, um.
Yeah.
Or we look at some type of discussion on restructuring a, the recycling that, that we have in town. I will tell you, one person throughout the idea. Yes, sir.
How, okay, how many people are we paying for to get the big debt for recycling? How many customers are we actually picking up?
I don't know how many we actually, cause some people don't put it out, some people put it out once a month, not bi-weekly, cause they just don't do as much recycling. It, it would be hard to, to truly know, cause I don't think they count the number of houses, they're, they're tracking the tonnage. They're, they're not tracking the number of pickups.
On my street, there's not a whole lot of people recycling.
I did it once a month when I was.
The whole one, does that make a difference if they're doing by tonnage, would it make?
Yes, ma'am, because the, the, the recyclables are going into the normal garbage picker.
Which is increasing the cost.
If they're, if they're, if they're not throwing it in the green top bin, they're putting it into the normal.
Blue bin.
And that, we paying for it, we paying for it double. If they don't put nothing out there, we still paying to pick it up.
A lot of cities are eliminating glass. Now, it, it sounds simple in concept, but the education of what can and cannot be recycled and then keeping them from throwing glass in there. I mean, are you truly curbing it, you could make the marketing attempt and we could push it very hard to, to cut out glass, but glass is heavy.
Glass is heavy and in addition to what, that we have to fight against is, the recycle bin that I have has a sticker on the top that shows glass is recyclable. Unless we're changing all those stickers.
They would be.
Would they?
They would be.
What's it, what are you gonna do with the glass, is it in the regular trash?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing now anyway, that's what most people do anyway.
Y'all don't mind, Seth is a recycling guru, no, he seriously is, his knowledge level on this recycling stuff is through the roof. I'd love for him to weigh in if y'all want, cause while you're doing that, I'm gonna run the restroom if y'all.
Recycling, according to Mike Rich, who's the new operations director here, director for advanced disposal. Uh, approximately forty percent of what's disposed of on a bi-weekly or even a monthly basis is, is glass, at maximum. So, if you eliminate glass, you're potentially only gonna reduce your weight by a maximum of forty percent, so that means you'll still have to pay for sixty percent. Whether you have two thousand customers or you have ten customers on a route, the tonnage is what we pay for a month. And right now, our cap in our contract, we pay a tonnage per disposal, of disposal, not number of pickups made. The cost has on, on our surcharge, so in our contract, we have a twenty-five-dollar base charge for recycling services. So, if Sunoco, who's the area recycling center, which is over there toward Hartsfield for, for this region, if they charge over that, we pay a surcharge. Well, when we first did our contract, we set it at twenty-five dollars and, and recycling at that point was around fifteen to twenty dollars. And normal trash disposal was twenty-five per ton, which is built in our contract. So Screamin' Eagle over there in Richland County charges twenty-five dollars per ton for garbage. Well, come the fall and into currently to where we are today, we're up to eighty-three, eighty-six dollars, I forgot which one it is, per ton for recycling. So, our surcharge cap was twenty-five, we're now at, let's just say eighty-three, it's either eighty-three or eighty-six, I don't remember off the top of my head. All right, let's go with eighty-three, thank you, see, I remember everything. So, we're at eighty-three, so that gap, that difference is what we're paying for on a monthly basis per ton. You eliminate glass, that could maximum, at maximum, reduce our weight by forty percent, but you still have the other sixty percent to pay for. And that's regardless if they're doing twenty-five hundred pickups or two thousand pickups. So, the other option, well, a, as Ted mentioned, we have the endings, the reducing, or the rearranging of the fee. And it's, it's, I, I mean, we're not pitching a particular scenario on this, we could just tell you what the consequences of each half would take.
In my mind, the unfortunate thing about the leading glass is, glass is probably the only item that is infinitely recyclable.
It's the easiest to.
Well, it's that, and it, you, you don't, you can recycle it over and over again without it losing its, its characteristics. Paper falls apart, plastic falls apart, it gets weaker as it gets recycled, glass does not. So, that's, that's a long-term downside, not, not necessarily for the budget, but environmentally, uh, to remove the glass from recycling option. But, we're talking dollars and cents, it's a different thing altogether.
I have a couple of things to say about that. One, um, one option that we might think about is splitting the difference with the, uh, what I consume. So, instead of passing the whole, that whole, you know, fee onto them, we'll just do half of it, split the difference with the. The other thing is that I would.
It's not a fee, it's a rate increase, right?
Right, but.
It's not a fee.
Okay, well, you, you, you base the rating.
I just want, because the vocabulary, I think, is very important, if we're talking about things like this, it's not a fee, it's, it is.
It's a what?
It's a service, it's a service.
Okay, so it's a, this is a difference without distinction, but, okay. So, the service rate, the rate, we split the rate, um, the amount of the rate increase with the, uh, with the consumers. The other thing is that I like to see staff, um, research glass recycling, recycling. The other thing is that I like to see staff, um, research glass recycling, recycling companies. In Greenville, they have a company that actually, um, recycles, they kind of manufacture other things using glass. And that way, that company is very aggressive with seeking glass because they make money off of it. And we have an industrial park here, if we can marry a glass recycling company, you know, get them incentive to get into the industrial park. We could actually make some money off of glass, recycling glass. So that's something that we, that we may be able to look at going forward.
Steve, you know in Greenville, do they give the residents separate recycling bins just for glass?
Yeah, because that company is there and that's what they do. I mean, and it really. I think they collect it also. Or they provide a place for the, for the city to take it. So the city might grab and take it to, to the recycling.
We can look into that company and see if there's an option.
And you hit on something I was gonna say is, is if, what I put here was if the whole cost were to be passed on. If there, if y'all wanted to look at a sharing, you're, instead of twenty-seven cent, you're looking at thirteen or fourteen cent. And basically, we.
Yeah, we take, we take a hit, they take.
We budget on the revenue side, we budget four thousand more dollars in revenue coming in and we budget the eight thousand on the expense side and that's, that's a shared cost. For it, or you pass the whole thing on or we absorb the whole thing. We, it's just that we have to look, for the sake of this budget, we can't ignore what's occurring with recycling and we have to do something.
So it's either paid for by taxes from the town, right? It's either paid for by taxes.
Essentially, yes.
Or it's paid for by the people who are using the service.
And, and, and it's worth, it's worth, it's worth looking into. It's worth looking into to find out what companies actually take the glass and everything. Because, you know, like I said, I know for a fact that Greenville does collect glass.
Well, and if nothing else in the interim, just, these are my thoughts coming out, it's certainly up to y'all for, for the discussion. But if we wanted to initially stop the collection of glass until we could research and, and, and figure out more of a long-term solution to that. We could cut out glass collection to cut it down and then do a shared cost and maybe that would reduce it down even more.
I think if it would go on our streets and, I personally would be against cutting it out, but that's just my thoughts.
How does each person pay for their recyclables?
They, they just pay one sanitation bill.
They just pay one.
Twelve dollars and ten cent, about to be twelve fifty-two.
So if they pay twelve-ten a month to have their recyclables recycled, picked up, recycled.
Trash and recycling.
Trash and recycling, well, how much of that trash, how much of that is trash and how much of that is recycled?
It's not broken down to us, I mean, that's just what Advanced Disposal.
The more I'm getting to is the citizen is paying for their recyclables to be picked up and they're not using. So where does that money go?
Well, they're, you're paying Advanced Disposal.
Whether you use it or not.
Whether you use it or not.
So that goes to them?
I mean, they have to have a contractual price, for them to get the best price, there's gotta be the built-in guarantees.
Why are you looking like that, Owen?
And it, it is what it is and there's not a.
Always negotiating a contract.
I can tell you from.
We had an opportunity to negotiate that flex scale, but we didn't, so.
I can tell you from a rate, a sanitation rate standpoint, that our twelve-ten is super competitive compared to the majority of people around us.
Well, and I don't blame them because we haven't done anything to promote from a town's point of view. We haven't promote, we haven't really started to promote recycling. So we can't be mad that people don't recycle. And you know what, Owen, if people realize they pay for it anyway, they probably would just start doing it just because they paying for it anyway.
A lot of people do recycle, I don't think, I know everybody doesn't, but a lot of people do recycle. I mean, there are people, numerous people that pay for multiple recyclable cars because they deal with a lot of cardboard and, and.
And most people don't even, don't even know that it's what you're playing with, they just throw it in the trash.
Ted, can I ask a question? This is how it's eight o'clock, Mike, could we have a discussion of how long we, we want to stay with this tonight? Or do we want, it's just a question, or do we want to schedule a second to hours just so we don't get brain dead? How's everyone?
I can tell you from a staff standpoint, we'd be fine if we got through general fund tonight and wanted to have another work session to cover age tax and utility, we'd be fine with that as well. That's up to y'all then. Look, I would suggest we get completely through general fund if we can, if we can.
So wait, so what do we, what do we, what do we direct the staff again, so we can split the business or?
If you'd like, if y'all just wanna hold on to it, I do have this on that final list as well. I put it, I put it on there.
Last thing I want to say about the street department, and, and I've been saying this for a while, is that we all have campaigned. And I went back and read some old twin cities. Every candidate that has filled out that twin city questionnaire has put town beautification as one of the top five things that they're gonna do. And we haven't done it. And, uh, we need to think about restructuring the street department, consolidating some of the departments so we get more people on the street. The town looks like crap, the parks look like, the parks look bad. And we promised people that we were gonna make that a priority and we haven't. We need to do that in this budget where we, we, we van, the street department, we have to do it. You know, we had, we, we have a lot of money going in police department, we have a lot of money going into the fire department. But our town does not have any curb appeal. When you, when you come in from Aiken and you see all that light. And if you come in on twenty-three and you look down, um, at downtown Bassburg, that light. You don't even think the town starts till you get to, um, Walmart. Then you think that this is Bassburg from Walmart all the way back. And we need to really, um, I mean, I ain't trying to, this, this is not personal, but, um, we need to, we need to really.
I think all of us probably have some ideas about it.
Okay, well.
I mean, I certainly do, I've got some things that I've put in there.
Okay, well, this is reflecting the budget. I mean, you said that in the conversation.
Not yet, but, but, I don't know.
This isn't time to do it yet.
No, no, I'm not saying, Steve, I'm not arguing with you.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you.
I can't, I can't tell the difference.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing with you. I, I think we're all on that same page and let's, let's, I think we continue on with what we're doing. I don't think that, that there's something inside that street budget that we need to do.
Yeah, we do, we need to, we need to talk about how you maybe consolidate, um, maintenance with the street department. You only have two employees in the maintenance department, the maintenance department. And one of those employees is, is the department head.
And if I may, a working department head.
Okay, and I, I'm not, this is not personal, Ted.
No, no, I'm not, and I'm not taking it personal, I, I just, I know what, on a daily basis, he's under the hood of vehicles, he's underneath vehicles, he's working on vehicles.
Yeah, but we, we also have opportunity to outsource some of that stuff to mechanics and, and, um, into, uh, Chevrolet plays. You got Walmart to do, to do tune-ups and oil changes and things like that. Also, we need to look at if this is saving us. I know, but you just said that we doing the same thing with the building respect, right? We, we doing the same thing, we contracting out because it saves us money. Have you looked at whether that would save us money or not?
Well, I can tell you this, we, if we did do it breakdown and we looked at the number of oil changes we did in a year. When you take a, when you take an oil change that you pay for at Walmart or anywhere else and what it cost us to do the oil change, it's cheaper for us to do the oil change.
Well, I like to see that number is broken out.
And then when you, if you gotta take a head gasket off a vehicle and make a repair, you're gonna pay ninety to a hundred dollars an hour to.
Yeah, but most of our, most of our vehicles, most of our vehicles are under warranty, right?
No.
What vehicle's not under warranty?
The majority of them, the majority of them are not under warranty. Most vehicles come with a three or five year warranty.
We don't buy a car that's under warranty, you still got a service, so if the service.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that we not servicing, I'm just saying, my, my point is, is this, we need to do something in, um, in the street department. We need to get more people in there so that we make the town look better, all right? Now, you know, y'all do what you wanna do with, with, uh, maintenance, but I like to see what you're saying in black and white. Because I do think that we could, uh, save some money.
Ted, did you break this down for us last year because I was looking at this discussion.
I will, I will, I will have to bring it back out.
We had this discussion last year.
I don't know if we did or not, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know we did.
I'll, I'll have to bring it back out, find it.
Okay.
Also, a few years ago, we stopped picking up bulk, um, and we've had, we had a problem for a while, I don't know if it's still, we're still having that problem. As people dumping stuff out at night and we're not knowing who dumped it, so we had to go pick it up anyway.
It's still, we, we've still saved a lot in, in not doing standard, again, going back to bulk collection. Ninety percent of what we were collecting was rental homes, people had moved out and the rentor of the property was putting their stuff by the road and, and we were collecting.
Yeah, but it don't matter, we need to, we need to pick that stuff up.
That, that was costing us about forty-five thousand dollars a year for us. To get back into bulk collection, it's a forty-five thousand dollar year's spend.
Is it the pickups that it's expensive or the, or the getting rid of it?
It's the getting rid of, so you have a tonnage price, you have to pay a hauling price, you have to pay, and then you have to pay per price per item. Like a mattress may be five dollars. Twenty-five dollars.
My memories are calling problems is, is, these are, these are business owners who are doing it. So these are the, these are the owners of rentals, parking rentals, whatever, and they're the ones that are, end up costing the town.
Are they not doing it now?
No, no, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, we, we get the occasional couch in the creek, but it's not, it's not as much as it even used to be.
We're not, we're not picking up somebody's, oh, my renter moved out, I'm just gonna take my stuff and throw it by the street because I, as, as a landlord, I don't wanna take deal with it.
Right.
So they put it in the town and pick it up.
What I'm gonna do, we don't have to. Okay, so we do, we do, we can identify rental property from regular residential property, right?
No, when we track, we logged every address where we were picking up bulk items and we went back and compared it to legal residency versus non-legal.
Okay, so we can allow people who are in non-commercial residencies to do it, the people that are not, not to do it.
An alternative would be a, uh, call-in system. If a, a resident could call in and say, I need to get rid of this, can the town pick it up? That way we can distinguish.
And again, if council wants to consider this, but I think even in that method, you're looking at, we need to look at about at least twenty thousand dollars, I would think. To budget to.
Yeah, but that's worth it.
To pick it up.
It's worth it to keep the town.
But does, would it, would it keep everything out of the creek?
I think so, I think it, I think it'd be less likely, I think a landlord is less likely to load up a couch and stick it in a creek.
I don't think you have a.
Then somebody can't avoid it now. I don't think a landlord's throwing it in a creek.
That's what I'm saying, the landlord's not gonna do that.
Right.
Um, so if somebody calls, like Charles said, and say, look, I got a taller than what, I, I haul it off myself now. In my district, if I see a mattress or something like that, I just pick it, put it in the truck and take it down to Lexington and recycling. Anything that they would take, you know, um, I mean, I just do it because I don't wanna see it on the side of revenue. But, um, I think if that person was able to call the town and say, look, you know, I'm, I'm sitting on a mattress, can somebody come get it? And we come get it, fine, let's do that, versus making the town look like crap.
I don't, and I'll just respectfully disagree, I, I don't think it's leading to major issues. I think it's improved and we do have instances, but we quickly jump out there and I'm like you, if I see something, I'll stop and grab it.
What, okay, what I'm saying, what we saying is the same thing because you do it anyway.
But can we ask the town to give us some ideas? And we can all, as council members, come up with some, some ideas of what we can do about that.
Okay.
We, we do, we do need to deal with that, I agree.
Well, we already doing it, that's, that's the same, so let's just formalize what we're doing. All right, sorry.
All right, so recycling. We're gonna have to have a direction from a budgetary standpoint, are we, are we absorbing eight thousand, sharing it, or? I mean, as we're in a general fund and we're gonna try and get the general fund to, to, as much where we hope for it to be to put it up for vote down the road.
Why don't we just go ahead and split that forty-two and add it on to the twenty-seven? We might pay higher than they can pay higher.
You would split the twenty-seven cent, um, if you're talking about a split method, you would go probably, y'all tell me thirteen or fourteen cent, whichever one you want.
Fourteen.
Whatever, ten, fourteen, I think, fourteen. All right, so we, we look at fourteen cent a month increase, um, so now that would be, that would be. Fifty-six cent on the, uh, the, the sanitation rates would be going up, so fifty-six. So that'd be twelve sixty-six, we would start billing July one for, for solid waste recycling. I mean, is that a consensus?
Yeah. Say that again. Who are you referring to as they pay thirteen and we pay fourteen?
They being the customers.
Yeah, so if they pay the thirteen and then they're gonna increase their rate for the other fourteen, they're paying it off.
No, I added on to the CPI that Advanced Disposal's doing. Advanced Disposal is doing a forty-two cent CPI.
That's already going.
That's going in effect July first. So if we're gonna split the costs and do fourteen cent, you're gonna have to add it to this and that's gonna be fifty-six cent. So it would be twelve, it would be going from twelve dollars and ten cent to twelve dollars and sixty-six cent July first.
So everybody's, everybody's utilities would go up.
The solid, the sanitation, it's going up forty-two cent at this point, we know. We know that's happening, that's the three and a half percent CPI.
Can, can we educate the people on that too, Seth, so that they know what we did was split the difference, it could have been more, but council stepped in and split the difference. Well, I'm saying that they can scream, but we can say, hell, we can, we even really gave it all to you.
What, what do we wanna do about, or do we wanna keep glass in effect or do we even talk about it?
The only problem is this is probably gonna continue going out, but I don't see the problem going away at a national or global level anytime soon. So if we decide to subsidize this piece of it, um, we're gonna, when it goes up again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more.
And again, eight thousand, we're trying.
And it's still gonna go up for them, it's gonna be more for both.
And we're trying to add a little bit of inflation into that, not too much, but if it goes up too much, then that's not, we're not really even gonna be splitting it fifty-fifty.
So are you saying that you, you think we're kind of putting ourselves out there and splitting it? That we're gonna be kind of expected to do that every year, so we might not wanna do that?
Absolutely, and maybe that's not a bad thing, but we just have to know that this is going to, this is most likely going to continue this way. You know, at least for two years.
Well, that's fine, I mean, that's fair.
Well, no, and again, I'm not saying it's fair or not fair, I'm just saying it's gonna go up for us and them each year.
The answer may be talking about the question of precedent.
Right.
Um, and I don't, I don't disagree with his point, and we're all, we're all receiving the service, the service that we're, you know, we're, well, we, we may not be receiving it if we're not putting our trash recycling out. But that's, that's a common.
That's the education of the town.
It is that, but, um, we don't get subsidized phone bills to the town, we don't get, so, I'm.
Yeah, Ted, we got a fifteen percent cut from SNG though.
We, we did get that, that was made later by the state.
It's a cut, it's a cut. So, but I think this is fair to, to the citizens that we show them that we are, you know, we're not really sticking it to them. It's just a reality that they gotta pay, they, they gotta.
And the reci, the recycling rate is changing.
Paying taxes and they're paying the, and the service charge. They're, they're paying and they're paying, right? So I, I, I don't, I'm not fond of the idea of setting the precedent of splitting.
So what you saying, Jason, just.
We don't have to split all time, what's the precedent?
Increase to base to about twenty-seven cents?
Let, let the customers, the users pay the full cost of using.
Twenty-seven cent increase.
The, the, the people that use it, you can't just.
You're talking about everybody.
You can't just.
No, I know, I get what you're saying.
Everybody.
I, I think you mean everybody.
So, so you need to tell me you're gonna raise mine even though I don't use it.
Yep, yep.
You're a lot of money. Yeah, but you ain't paying that much now.
Real, real quick. I mean, we can't, we can't give the taxpayers a break.
But we're spending their money anyway to pay it out of the general fund.
It's not a tax.
We understand it's a tax.
It's a service.
Listen, uh, listen, 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 ladies. A tax by, a warehouse by any other name. A tax by, a rule is by any other name as a rule. You can call it what you wanna call it. It's, it's an increase in the, how they're possible, how about that? Whatever you call it. Okay, so I'm, so I'm gonna, let's not go semantics.
We're not, we're not taxing it.
May we move on? We're not increasing.
Did we decide to split it? Was that a consensus?
No, I don't think we're voting to split it. I, I think we're still having a discussion. Oh, he needs it for the revenue.
Right.
For the.
He need to put the budget.
Yeah.
I agree with Jason. Just increase twenty-seven cents.
Wow, come on, man.
Wow.
Why are you?
We're gonna have to do it anyway, as the mayor said, we're gonna have to do it anyway.
Why are you against it if, if they're receiving the service?
I just think that we should uh split the difference, that's all. You know, we should split the difference because they are, first of all, listen. Alright, you really wanna go there? Okay, okay. How many minutes?
Three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. I don't need three minutes. I need, I need just two seconds to say that when we raised the water bill. Alright, twenty-seven point nine percent because we told the citizens that we were getting better water, new water. It's twelve years ago. We hadn't done it. We, we pretty much owe them. You know, they, they paying higher rate. Charles, you know that.
Yeah, I thought.
Okay, so let's just, okay, so let's just give them. Okay. Y'all do what you wanna do.
The cost is going up.
Okay, fine. Let's do what you wanna do.
I think it'd be great. I like your idea of bringing back bulk services. So instead of, instead of, cause this is just gonna keep increasing.
Okay, we know that, we know that Lance. Everything increases. Everything increases. So, because it's gonna increase doesn't, doesn't mean that, okay, we're gonna do it like nothing else is gonna increase. Life is increased. You pay more for everything.
So, look at the idea of bringing back bulk pickup for those citizens rather than the business owners. And, yeah, you know, move that stuff around the budget. And this is, just continues being a pass, pass-through service and add a service in it. Instead of supplementing this service and then not having a bulk, we're still gonna be upset because it's gonna raise either way.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
It won't raise as much if you share than it would if you just add a hundred and twenty something.
Let me re, let me, let me rephrase. I, I think what, where, where he's at and what he's saying is. We have no control whatsoever on recycling, solid waste, anything. This is a pass-through service that we are simply the middleman of a contract.
Right, right.
And, and this is as much advanced disposal in the market with us not really having a part. Now, I think what he's saying is, because we have no hand or no control whatsoever on what's happening with this. In this particular instance, let's just service a pass-through. If, put the twenty-seven cent on them because we, it's beyond our control and there's nothing. Whereas bulk, however, we are providing the service. It's fully within our control. Let's focus more effort on that and how can we make that happen from a, a funding standpoint. Versus this where we can't control anything.
That's a false dichotomy. Two separate things, apples and oranges. All I wanna say is, is that, um. You don't have to worry about that. But when, um, when this, that's the, the something comes to me and say, why did y'all raise my trash? You know, whatever percent, whatever percent, why did y'all do that? I don't even use recycling, blah, 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 blah. I'm gonna tell her that I was for splitting that with me or something. You know, I thought that, I thought that was a fair thing to do. We can't control it, but we could split it with, um, you know, keep passing on and passing on. That's the council's decision. That's just my personal thing is I would fight for my citizens, my constituents with uh fourteen cents. I mean, I would give my constituents fourteen cents, that's all. I understand, yeah, I understand.
Charles, can we, can we take a vote?
No.
Well, what we're doing, Susan, we're just getting, getting the uh.
Guys, we can, we can kinda go, it's not a vote, but a consensus.
I didn't think that we voted in work session. I didn't think we voted on anything in work session.
We don't, but we can kinda get a consensus from people on where they stand.
That we don't do.
Instead of twenty-seven.
It's not so much a vote, it's just getting a consensus from people where they stand. It's not.
Well, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just warning that I think.
Steve, you don't get to tell me that I cannot speak my opinion. Okay, then let me speak. I listen to you speak.
Say something to Sarah.
I think we should put the twenty-seven cents in the budget. We still can vote on it, but in the work session.
Well, look at those.
This is work session. This is disgusting.
They see another.
To carry it over.
Thirty-seven cents.
A work session is not to vote for something.
Notice that. When we, when we promoted it, then they go, oh, no.
Well, like you said, it's more mental. It, it's not more as much pocketed in that amount as it is mental. I, I agree with that.
Come on.
And that way, that other ten cents, we can pick up the bulk trash upon a phone call to pick it up.
Well, I don't think nobody has agreed to that.
No, we, we.
Well, we'll have to circle back to bulk Congress.
We have to circle back to this, let's go, next.
We, we need to get to any direction.
Right.
On how he needs to proceed with.
So when did we start doing this in work session?
He needs to know where to.
When did we start doing this in work session?
We're just giving direction for the proposed budget.
Well, is it up or down, right?
Well, it's, hey, it's either, it's either pass on or split.
Yeah, pass on.
Pass on.
No, it's not, it's just where, where are you at in your head with regards to?
He's looking at her head. I personally think we should split it.
Alright, please. Pass on.
Susan.
I think you should pass on.
May it. Uh, you want me to go? Pass it on.
I'm split.
Split.
You know what I'm doing.
Well, it's four thirty.
We're trying to give.
Kick it to the next meeting.
We're trying to give administrations some direction and to propose a budget. That's all we're doing.
Like I said, every, every work session, we come up with something new.
We're not voting because it's not being affected.
Not vote in a work session. A work session is to discuss what is to go into the meetings. It is not to be voted on anything.
We, we, we did a brick wall here, let's move on.
Exactly. Let's go.
I tell you what.
We can't give the administration any direction. Come on, council.
I think you understand the direction. Alright, let's move.
Alright, um.
What, what is it? I need to understand.
It's passing, I mean, it's uh passing it on. That's what, five people say pass it on.
Okay, okay, let's move on.
Alright, there we go. We didn't vote with the consensus was.
Are we, are we done with the general fund yet or are we still?
Oh, we're, 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 we're almost to the final.
When you really have to argue.
Part about requests. And, and once we get past the request, then we'll, we'll schedule another meeting. Alright, alright, fleet, fleet budget, quick and easy. There was no significant changes this year within the fleet budget. Um, a few minor up and downs of some line items, nothing, nothing of major. Um, hundred and thirty-seven thousand seventy dollars.
That's the entire budget. What presented that, what presented that budget? It's salad. That's why I stepped with the same time. So, I'll read it to you.
Percentage of.
The fleet budget.
Fleet budget is salad. You can calculate it.
About hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Alright, so real, real quick, this was a general fund, non-depart. Alright.
Go ahead.
General fund, non-departmental budget. Um, the most significant change in this this year are. A staff recommendation we were putting forward involves the senior assistance fund. Previously in the past, the senior assistance fund has been within the general fund, non-departmental. One of the things that we are, are asking council to consider this year and recommending is rather than the taxpayer-funded fund. Supplementing the water and sewer bills. We're all for senior assistants. We've strengthened the program and everything. But that we shift that fourteen thousand four hundred to the utility fund and let, rather than taxpayer funds supplementing that. Let water and sewer customer funds supplement that.
Amen.
Uh, uh, again, it's a recommendation and an idea we wanted to put out this year. Um.
Wait a minute, say that again.
The program's still in place. It's still funded at same.
Slow down, slow down. Say that again.
So right now, the senior assistance fund helps them with their water and sewer bills for the town.
I got you.
It's funded out of the general fund, not the utility fund, water and sewer fund.
Hold on, you're talking about the, the senior assistance?
Right.
Yeah.
I thought it came out of the feed for uh, for SNG, no?
But that was never locked in. That was, that was discussed previously, but it was never solidified with an ordinance.
Saying this for me.
That's what we know.
Pull up, Steve.
Okay.
Finish saying this for me. You say what now? Do it again.
The senior assistance fund, which assists qualifying people with their water and sewer bills.
That part of it. Go to the next part.
Has always been funded from the general fund.
Exactly.
What we have recommended doing is moving that to the utility fund.
Enterprise.
The enterprise fund.
Okay.
So that custom, water and sewer customers' bills are, are assisting with other people's water and sewer bills. Versus taxpayer money assisting with water and sewer.
Okay, so will it affect that?
Well, no, customer water, not service money.
Will it affect that?
What money is?
Will it affect that?
The, the, the amount will be the same, the program will be the same, it's just.
Coming out one bucket instead of.
It, it's going out of water and sewer, it's moving to utility fund as an expense out of the utility fund versus the general fund. The program's the same, it's still the same amount of money.
What you gonna do with the SNG funds? I thought that's how it funded.
That was, when the program was put into place, that was kind, that was what it was attached to, even though it was never formally.
It was funded by.
But it was never formally.
It was formally done through, um, through the budget, which is an ordinance.
But, but this is a different budget, a different ordinance. This is a different budget, a different budget ordinance.
You can change it by, by ordinance. You can change.
What we're saying is, is we, we've recommended and are asking y'all to consider moving it.
Why did y'all, why y'all wanna do that? I'm just curious.
To me, it's about taxpayer monies.
All of it is taxpayers' money.
No, water and sewer services paid for is not the same as taxpayer money.
Wow, whose money is?
One, you're paying for service debt.
But it's still from the taxpayer.
For how much, well, they may be taxpayers, but it's not tax, they are not paying tax bills. It's coming from the same customer. I, I don't disagree with you on that.
But go ahead.
So, and, and actually you have people that are paying water and sewer bills outside of town that, that aren't taxpayers. Could be assisting with, with this. They're taxpayers for the county, not the town.
Okay, alright.
Anyways, um.
So that's the main focus, um.
That was, that was, that was the main focus.
To change one, yeah.
Everybody, even the Lake Murray system, people will be contributing towards this versus it being just on the back of our taxpayers.
Alright, I like that.
Are y'all fine with that? Okay. Cause when we get the utility budget, you're gonna see it in the non-departmental added in there. Which I, appears to be another night's conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, alright, so we're getting ready to review uh requests by departments and staff. Um, I will go ahead and throw it out there. One of the things you will see is a two percent across the board. Cost of living increase for staff. That is one of our highest priorities that we would like to see funded this year and we'll talk more about that in a minute.
CPI last year.
Cpi, uh.
Last year, three point two one.
About that, right off the top of your head.
Three point two one then.
Oh, what, what the state's using is two point four four.
Two point four.
For, for tax increase. So two point four four is what's been given us for tax increase.
Two percent.
Um, one thing to keep in mind as we look at this list is, if y'all will recall, the ones that have been around here, uh. Stephen Charles, um, since in twenty fifteen, we did a five-year lease purchase for three hundred and five thousand dollars worth of capital.
Right.
We've got this year's payment and the budget we're working on now. And then next year, we'll have that payment. But we can start a new lease purchase next year when we're doing budget prep, cause you don't make your first payment. For a year after you start the new lease purchase. So next year, we will be able to put a new lease purchase in place next year. Uh, so keep that in mind as we're looking at some of these budget requests, um, that we do get to start a new lease purchase next year. I'm gonna skip past that slide, cause I don't wanna run you off too quick before there's an understanding of what that slide's on there. I am going to flip at this point over to the list. So the two percent cost of living, um, recommendation that we have going back down to the bottom here. If you will recall, we have available for the general fund at this point, fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
You see Ted, that, that's always an arbitrary number. That's how they got us last time before. You remember? And then when something came up, they had all this other money. Who came up with that number?
That's based on adding in the revenue, projected revenues and projected expenses as, as is in the budget you have.
We own to that. We, 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 we got that the last time we were, I talked about that.
So you're showing, you're showing a negative now, but July one.
It's a percentage.
Yeah, takes almost all of it, which I'm opposed to.
See, that's why.
After this.
Can we take a five minute break?
No, I don't know, you got a motion in.
Motion.
Oh, no motion.
No sense of motion coming.
There might be a revenue thing that Seth and I need to look at real quick that I may have made a mistake in the revenue.
So I moved that with adjournment.
Well, if we can take a five minute break for me to review this.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? For your second. Alright, let's take a vote.
But they, they just.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn.
Okay, then that's fine, cause I would really like to evaluate what he just brought up anyway.
Yeah, as you said, you only need five minutes.
Call a roll.
He asked for five minutes to go over something that Seth had and you all went on and adjourned.
We were on adjournment.
I know, but he asked for five minutes to go over something that.
And it may be something that.
I've got a motion and a second.
It could be important.
I withdraw one second. Withdraw.
Now, please go.
If I may, based on what I see, it may be that the drawing board on some of this anyway, so I may be asking y'all to adjourn for tonight. Anyways, until I can put this into place.
Go ahead, Teddy.
So, five minutes. I'd like to look at this and if I think we need to adjourn for us to further evaluate, we'll take five.
I made the motion and I withdrew it and hold on a second, and I withdrew it. I made the motion to.
We are a temporary reset. We're not for the, for the break.
Oh, Charles. Charles, the motion. Charles, hold on a second. Wrong, and then they go, withdrew. Um, that's, and that's why.
For a five minute break.
Um, Scraps. I saw you Scraps. JP, listen, that's why the mayor, instead of the mayor taking the vote, the clerk should call the roll. So she'll always know who's, uh, second.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, the clerk needs to call the roll. When we have a vote, the clerk needs to call the roll. That way she always know who's, who's doing what. That's how they do it. Your most professional setting.
You want to look up that order, our ordinance on our meetings? Is if we were supposed to do it for our meetings, is that ordinance? I don't think it's specified. I think it's fine.
Because, because our ordinance says that we use.
Cause I'm there.
It's specified in there. It's specified here.
It's all good.
Okay.
He had me about to panic my butt off. We're good.
Okay, I'm glad we're not going over there.
And then the business license.
I'm actually.
But not over.
Y'all wanna share an overview?
No, no, no. It's about start pouring, it's about.
Okay, Seth, so what happened? Can we, can we all hear what's going on?
They're talking about business licenses, where it's standing out.
No, I mean, can we all get to what you gotta say so we can go home, cause I don't.
No, I don't have anything to add. It's cleared up, answered question, he about made me freak out.
But y'all miss business license.
You got my heart racing.
Real rocking at the same breath. We tried to, when we consolidated town, all people had two or more rental units have a business license. You can imagine more than that.
Well, they do that.
Is it two or more?
All of them.
One.
All of them.
One?
If you have rental property, you have that.
You have to have a business.
We're trying to give, we, we're trying to screw up citizens.
Again, it all goes back to the business license.
So, if I had, so if you have a rental, you have to have a business license.
This is crazy.
Really?
It's insane.
So, if I wanna. The act of soliciting to make money alone constitutes a business license.
Yeah.
Whether you make a dollar or not, the act of soliciting business.
Yeah.
So, people that go and knock on doors trying to, trying to make money, they are.
To have people that's supposed to know.
So, the, 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 the code of office.
I, I mean.
I don't know, but we, we shouldn't do that to people. We ain't never done that before.
Yeah, we'll wait for you.
You go to the last door.
I think he's.
How?
I think he's, Charles, did he go to the restroom, or is he outside, does he?
All we're doing is.
We're gonna get back some weekend to adjourn, but we want everybody to have something.
No, we, we, Seth had something to say, and then y'all.
Oh, you did?
Let's, let's, I'm ready, I'm ready for that, police.
We're waiting for a couple people.
Okay.
Cynthia had to step out.
I got you.
There's Charles, Charles.
Yep. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'll say this, it's up to y'all if you wanna continue on with this list tonight, or if you want to.
I'd like to get out of here for a minute.
Oh, okay.
I got that one.
I would at least like to run through this list so that when people, we, we can ask.
We asked this.
Okay.
How long does it take?
No, we have, we have.
Alright.
It, it, it ain't gonna take, you know, bring it back in session, let's go.
Alright, we're back, we're back.
Teddy.
Alright, Ted, let's go, that ain't the way to do it, but anyway, let's go. They just doing anything tonight.
So, from, from, from a staff recommendation standpoint, um, we do recommend a two percent. Um, since twenty fourteen, um, every year, staff has received, um, a cost of living. This past year was the first year in the current budget we're in that there was not a cost of living increase for staff. And we feel strongly that we, we need to get this two percent cost of living put into the budget. It is forty-two thousand five hundred, that does include FICA retirement and workers' comp increases that'll come along with the salary increases to do the two percent.
And this is for all of?
That's for all of general funds.
All general funds, okay.
When we get to utility, it's seventeen thousand for utility status for a two percent across the board.
How much money did you say we had, we had unaccounted for?
Fifty-four, eight fifty-six.
So, it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand is probably not good.
That's really not a real number.
You said forty-two thousand, well, general fund ain't enterprise?
No.
That's just general fund. And you could, you could deduct, and that would deduct off of the fifty-four that we have, that's reflecting as available.
Alright, that's not a real number, but y'all can play that game, we haven't been through that before, but go ahead.
Every year.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand, that number that's left is based on revenues that have been projected and expenses.
Alright, man, I ain't wrong.
Charles, can you share that with us?
Yeah.
What do you, what do we need to know?
Like, um, go down to the box.
Okay.
See, we're showing a deficit.
No.
No, we're showing a surplus.
I mean, uh.
No, no, that, that red is not a surplus.
Oh, the red is the total.
So.
Did we fund everything?
Here's the, here's the budget summary for the general fund. Right now, revenues that have been put in are at four million one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.